She said every time it stores.
And time, the second item is invocation by Pastor First Baptist Church, Rick Longchirier. Rick, thanks for being here with us, the first meeting of the year.
Thank you.
Start us off right.
Let's pray together. Father, we know that it's a new year and we always greet new year with optimism and always kind of a fresh start and a new start, but only you know what 2016 holds for all of us as individuals, but what it holds for our community also that we love and where we have chosen to live. And so, Father, we just ask that you would bless it, give our leaders wisdom as they lead into what is best, what is best for our community. We do pray for Councilman Joe Sharbit, I know, just talked to Lynn, that he's there in Houston and just having some tough days and just pray that you would just, we just ask that you would heal him. But Father, just ask that you would just surround that family with your presence. And once again, Father, thank you for the opportunity just to lift our community up in prayer, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Doug, would you please lead us in the plan? Please, show me.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, item four is public input and unscheduled personal appearances. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the authority on any of the agenda items? Yes, sir. Come forward.
Don't need to.
You do, you do need to, and you've got three minutes, and I know that's gonna be tough for you, but we're gonna keep the clock on you.
All right.
And you need to state your name, please.
I can do it. My name is Rich Lillard. I'm a resident of the great city of Miami, and I'm here to say happy new year to all of you all, and I wanted to say some nice things about our police department.
Maybe he's got four minutes then. Go ahead, Rich.
When is his election? I want to tell you all that some of you all may know this, some of you all may not, I had some interesting neighbors move in next door not too long ago, and they were, there was a lot, all of a sudden, they were the most popular neighbors I've ever seen. There were several cars showing up, and so, we, I was, I was a forceful neighbor, I guess, in somewhat of a sense, but obviously couldn't do much as, as a, just a citizen, and the police department did a fantastic job of getting out, getting on top of that, and very shortly, the, the house was raided, and I gotta say that I just happened to be home when it was raided, and it was awesome to watch, so, and we have a chief that, that goes through the door first, so I thought that was pretty neat, and it was, I got fired up kinda like you do before a football game, so it was, it has to be a pretty good rush. And they just did a phenomenal job. It was quick as far as, you know, the notification, and then they got the information that they needed and, and went in and just did a great job, and I know that you all don't get enough accolades, and so I wanted to do that, and so, thank you all very much for that. Appreciate it.
Rich, thank you for that. And I wanna say for the benefit of everybody watching, we have about thirty police officers, and we have, you know, almost fifteen thousand citizens, and so it's those eyes and ears out there like Rich was, that's very important. So, you know, if you have a situation like that in your neighborhood or near your home that you're uncomfortable with, please do not hesitate to contact Chief Anderson or any of the detectives or, you know, members of our police department, because we certainly wanna be proactive. Thank you again, Rich. And you were just under three minutes, that's pretty impressive.
It's a new year.
Okay, item number, anybody else before we move on? Okay. Item five is the consent agenda. Staff is recommending item six through nine for the consent agenda. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
And second, roll call, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Item ten is new business. Dean, anything?
None of this agenda, you're on.
Okay, eleven is staff reports, those are in your packet. There are no questions, we'd move on to the amended announcements. Any announcements?
No.
And item thirteen is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call?
Weston?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
So we are now gonna move right into the regular city council meeting for today's date and time. Item two for this meeting is public input and unscheduled personal appearances. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council or any agenda items? There being none, item three is consent agenda. Staff is recommending items four through fifteen for the consent agenda, and if there are no objections to any of those items, I would ask for a motion.
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Weston?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
That takes us to item sixteen, which is approved, an addendum number three, the contract C-16-46 with Cannon facilitated through Lakeland. Tyler, does your name on it, sir?
Yes, sir. With the separation of Public Works and Public Utilities, we moved all of the managers, myself, we moved down to the operations center.
Okay.
So we need a copier down there, and this is just adding the copier to the total contract.
Okay, and Dean, I guess you've reviewed the need for that and agree with it?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
And we need a motion to approve the addendum.
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Johnson?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye. Thank you.
Item seventeen is election resolution for fiscal year 2016-2017. It's a lengthy resolution, three pages, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing, just gonna point out that there will be, filing period is the first week in February for the municipal offices, which will include the northeast, northwest, and southeast wards. I get that right, David?
Yes.
Okay. And so, if anyone is interested in filing for council positions, please go file. You will go to the county clerk's office, the filing period starts on that Monday, February first, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then there is a withdrawal period if someone changes their mind, and that's the following Thursday and Friday. David, is there anything else I need to touch on?
No, I don't, I don't think so, Mayor. Again, just to repeat, it is the northeast ward, the northwest ward, and the southeast ward.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended copy, not the one in our packet, but this one.
So, just to be clear, I've got one that has some changes that I'm looking at, can I just see if yours is different than this? Okay.
What you'll find, Mayor, is that I think someone along the way was looking at a 2015 calendar.
Okay.
The changes that were made on the version we're presenting to you for disposition or vote tonight would show the filing period of Monday, February first, Tuesday, February second, and Wednesday, February third, and withdrawal and contest period of Thursday, February fourth, and Friday, February fifth.
Okay. And so, I'm gonna call it the red line version that I've been looking at, because this red line version has those dates on the thing.
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
Right.
Need a second on that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Uh, second.
Roll call?
Johnson?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Thank you. Item eighteen, resolutions supporting favorable housing consideration for a tax credit award for new affordable housing, which is up to twenty single-family dwellings located on infill lots within the original townsite of the city of Miami, and up to twenty-four units within the Harvest Time Tabernacle Building for Oklahoma Affordable Housing Partners LLC. Now, Dean, I think we talked a little bit about this our last meeting of last year, correct?
Yes, it was on our December eighth meeting, we actually talked about it in great length.
Okay.
So, tonight, what Tammy Creason is going to be doing is basically showing how the general concept has now been formalized into the resolution and what will be presented to the Oklahoma Board. And again, our recommendation is still very much to approve it, we think it's right in line with our comprehensive plan and what it's identified for both historical and housing redevelopment. And also, I think I'd like to point out that some of you might have seen an article on KOM last night about the number of vacant homes that we have in Miami, and a lot of the efforts that we're doing, I think it was a very good article, but this is still an item that is very, very, draws a lot of attention to people when you look at Facebook posts and things like this, and it's such a good step forward to see somebody coming in and starting to develop new housing in our town, because that will also help with what we're trying to do to revitalize our neighborhoods.
And is there a presentation related to this item? You mentioned Tammy.
Tammy's gonna do a very quick presentation.
Okay, so Tammy, be sure you talk about what infill lots are, probably will, but if, just make sure you touch on that.
Absolutely, thank you guys so much. I didn't, I kind of shortened this up from the last presentation that we had, but the project basically consists of two components, all of which are gonna be in the downtown area identified in the comprehensive plan. So kind of our headquarters base is gonna be the Harvest Tabernacle that many of you guys are familiar with, which is the historic mining exchange building. So we've worked really actively with the historic consultant, we've submitted to the SHPO office for individual eligibility to list that building as a historic place on the National Register, and we've kind of worked with their comprehensive plan, and we're calling this project Route 66 Landing, so kind of trying to embody that downtown spirit. So we're gonna have the historic building, which will be twenty-four apartments, and those are gonna be leased to seniors in, in the downtown area. So the entire first floor of that will be community space, and I'll show you in just a minute. And then the second component of that is to meet, you know, the greatest demographic in need is to work with the city on these infill lots and do new single-family homes. So they're three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, very traditional, one-car garage in some of them, traditional, you know, ranch-style homes. We worked with an architect to create some really neat elevations that we think have a lot of character and kind of have that historic appearance to them. So all of the lots are gonna be located within a half a mile of that downtown historic building. So we've got a list of lots that we're working with that the city own or that the county own that would work with us to transfer them, to identify those lots, up to twenty is what we're asking for. So that would occur at a time after an allocation, if we were fortunate enough to move forward with OFA and get an allocation, then we would work with the city attorney and with Dean and with everybody to identify, you know, exactly what those twenty are, but right now, the ones in your packet are all city-owned, county-owned lots that had blighted housing on it that was torn down or that the city otherwise owns. So I'll quickly show you in just a second on those.
I'd like to point out something to him, if I could, very quickly. When we're talking about some of these lots being owned by the county, David and I have had a discussion with Commissioner Earls, and we will have to work with the county commission, but has, has happened in the past, he indicated to us that they're more than happy to transfer the ownership to us for these projects, they're happy that we're taking this on. It's really a good partnership that we've got with the county, so that, those are just some of the details we're gonna have to work on as this progresses, but in case somebody wondered, I just wanted to let you know, we did make that contact, and Commissioner Earls was very enthusiastic about this.
So the idea would be, we'll submit our application to OFA, which is the Oklahoma Housing Board, that competes over the next couple of months with projects throughout the state, including your other senior development here in Miami. Those are ranked, we actually will have early indications on what those rankings and scorings are, and as soon as we have some early identi, you know, identification, we can start working on a lot of those specifics and details. But the single-family homes are all three-bedroom homes, two-bath, the historic building, we've got the entire first floor is all community space, so along with some of the, this will be the street front, you know, we've got a library, kind of a formal area that we could work with, some of the downtown organizations to do kind of a museum, some pictures, and different things in that main entry foyer, sticking with our Route 66 theme, we've got shuffleboard court with some community tables and space and a full kitchen for the residents to get together, and all of that space, there's a fitness center, offices, all of that space would be open as community space to the residents, both in the homes and in the apartments. And then the floors two through five are all mirror each other, and they're a combination of one- and two-bedroom apartments, the majority of them are two-bedroom apartments, there's twenty-two bedroom and one-one bedroom on each of those, and then kind of what we talked about in the past, that all of those will have very modern finishes, very attractive, marketable living spaces. So as we're working to revitalize the downtown, we have to raise that standard of living. We want, you know, to put these houses in small groups and denominations on some of these streets that you guys are actively working to, you know, clean up the blight, and start raising that standard, you know, compliance and code enforcement, and you're really just creating that groundwork of what the standard going forward's gonna be. So we're really excited about that opportunity and to be a part of it, getting common areas throughout that main building. Most of the homes, as in your packet, are individual lots and they're infill blighted lots. The one, just because we talked about it a little bit in the last meeting, we wanna create that visual momentum in the downtown, so we did go and meet, my partner, Debbie Shance, is here tonight, and we did have the opportunity at Dean and Christie's invitation and urging to meet with the RED group downtown, and so we had some great conversations with them on parking and ways to make the greatest impact, and the one thing that I think everybody kind of compromised through those meetings and that everybody was happy with was, this is a city-owned vacant lot, it's unpaved, it's contiguous to an existing parking lot, so this would be the backside of like Chapter's bookstore, there's a parking lot here, and a parking lot overflow lot here, and then this is an unpaved lot. So kind of in that gateway to downtown, that is included in a city-owned lot that is included in the packet to be deeded, and so that would give us four houses right in a row, that you're creating kind of that visual impact of what that standard's gonna be, and kind of creates a gateway into that housing and tying it to the downtown retail. So we're really pleased with that, everybody, so here's a lot, here's a picture of all the lots. This would be the historic building, this would be that pocket neighborhood, and then again, you can kind of see, these are all within a half a mile, you've got, you know, two or three here, two here, one here, one here, so kind of just spreading those out. Anywhere we could get, you know, two or three together, we think that creates the biggest momentum, but we wanna kind of spread that out in the downtown to evenly distribute that within your comprehensive area. There's the list, that's the initial list. I think that the plan would be that we're very open to working with you guys, working with the county as we move forward to make sure that we have the exact fit, the exact locations of what those locations would be, but up to twenty homes. I think this actually represents eighteen homes, but just kind of that initial plan.
And Glenda, none of these are flood areas?
I'm not for sure, I know that 30D Southwest is.
So, so obviously we'd have to build up.
Yes, as long as you're two feet above BFE or five.
And Glenda, we've talked about 30D before, I think it's just part of 30D that's in it.
It's just part of it.
Yeah, so it's buildable, it's just that they will have to comply to the flood regulations.
I thought we checked all, but that could be, yeah, I was gonna say, I thought that we talked about. Glenda's been awesome about rolling out, we had a long list and weaning them down and rolling through this, so I am happy to go into as much detail as you guys want. I know that last time I very enthusiastically took up a lot of your time, so I didn't wanna do that this evening, but it's been a very positive experience the last couple of weeks since last meeting, meeting with downtown, you guys have some extremely enthusiastic business owners, and we're really excited about the opportunity to be a part of that and just doing everything we can to make this as competitive as possible so we can get some momentum and get onto phase two and see what, see what we can accomplish.
Dean, anything you wanna add or any questions?
I kind of gave my feelings about it in my presentation. I think this is something that we should be supporting, it ties into our comprehensive plan to start getting this type of development into the central business district, and again, I've worked with programs like this in the past, and, and they're the real thing. If, if we get the approval with the tax credits, it can, it can mean a lot of good things for downtown Miami.
And Mayor, this may be helpful, I mean, it's, we will be coming back before the council, because we're talking about essentially committing public property to what at first glance may appear to be a private use, but the law of economic development as it's been developed in the Oklahoma courts makes this possible, provided that certain conditions are met, and I will certainly be making sure that those conditions are met and explaining that to you when the time comes that you're asked to approve deeds.
Okay, so, do we have a resolution specifically to pass later, we just don't have the hard copy in front of us, is that right?
We do, sir.
The, the hard copy of that was in your packet.
In our packet, that's okay. Okay, so if there are no other questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve the resolutions supporting favorable tax consideration.
Make motion approved.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Weston?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item nineteen, discussion concerning disposition of county and city surplus derelict properties?
Mayor, I'll, I'll start on this one if I could, and I, I don't think this needs to be a long discussion, I think that since we don't have a full, full council here tonight, but I think it's something we just wanted to bring up since we just finished this. I wanna thank Krista, because she has done a tremendous job of cataloging all of the properties that either we or the county has that could potentially be developed. Now, some cannot be developed, they're very much in the floodway, you can't rebuild, but we have a number, I think just today, we went over about sixty lots that could potentially be redeveloped. And again, working with the county, some are county lots, some are city lots, that what we'd like to eventually do, and we're, we're working with Christie as well on what we're kind of calling urban homesteading, and that is that some of these lots, we'd like to have programs much like you just approved, that we might do it on a smaller scale, if we have a developer that's interested in maybe just one or two, to give them incentives and try to get them work back up again. So if anybody's watching tonight and seeing that we're working with this one entity on this, our attitude is, we'd love to work with anybody. We have such an inventory of vacant lots in town, and if we can start having that type of infill, as has been identified by the comp plan, we can start bringing our housing, housing inventory back up again. It's gonna be one step at a time, but we just wanted to let you know and have a discussion maybe at a later time in a lot greater detail about what we do have. But I think it's just, you know, what we're doing tonight, what we've done before with the Four Corners project, is to just start having that discussion, that we're trying to work on this, we're trying to get this, this ship turned around, as I was quoted last night. David, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add?
Not, not a whole lot more to add. Again, this, this notebook, well, I hate to call it a notebook, it's a, it's one of those huge three-ring binders with over sixty tabs, documents what we understand to be all of the county-owned properties. We've been slowly and gradually evaluating all of them to determine, for example, Mayor, their floodplain status, and those are separately charted. They may still have use in redevelopment in the city of Miami, some floodplain properties may be available for redevelopment, depending on the BFE or base flood elevation, but nonetheless, we're identifying separately which are designated as floodplain properties. With regard to the, what we call the non-floodplain properties, as, as the city manager mentioned just a moment ago, we had a meeting this morning and went through over sixty of those, met with Christie on behalf of Community Development, we met with Glenda, we met with
Our inspectors.
Our inspectors, code compliance people, and others to simply look at visual displays of each one of these properties to determine their size, their status, what we knew about them in terms of institutional knowledge, to help develop recommendations to bring back to the council for purposes of future communication with the county commissioners, and as Dean said, we spoke with Commissioner Russell Earls the week before Christmas. There's substantial work going into making this a reality, and again, should the council decide to, to, to accept, request and accept some or all of these lots from the county, yes, there's a legal mechanism to do that. There are so many options that you can go to the public with. There may be instances in which the, the best utilization of certain properties may simply be for the neighbors to have larger yards and for the city and county to mow fewer pieces of property.
Exactly.
Others may be available for additional construction. There are structures that may be available to be remodeled or renovated, you will be in a position, and different, we're still developing the packages, to go to the public and say, pursuant to the comprehensive plan, these are the best intended purposes, these are suggestions, these are the proposals, but we're also open to hear proposals and suggestions from the community at that time. If you've got a better idea on how this lot, whatever lot it may be, should be utilized in the interest of the community, we wanna be in a position to listen to those suggestions. But it's moving forward at a, at a very steady pace.
And even if Route 66 Landing is successful, there could be a phase two, and some of these properties could very much be a part of the phase two as well.
We identified numerous lots that are essentially vacant lots right now owned by the county, which could be conveyed to the city, which it appears to us could be built on now.
Awesome. Well, the whole, the essence to me of the comp plan boils down to controlling our destiny going forward and making informed decisions and not just haphazard decisions, which we've at times done, so that's, it's very encouraging, the progress that's being made. If there are, there's no item to vote on there, just really informational, right?
We really, from an informational standpoint, and also to really introduce this concept, as the city attorney just indicated, every lot's gonna have its own story, and if we have people that are interested and want to talk to us about it, we'd love to be able to do that, just as, as the Route 66 Landing project came in, they came in the door and said, "We've got an idea," and we ran with it, and we hope that we'll have other people that will do that with us as well, and it's, it's, could be a very good thing for Miami.
How are we gonna communicate with the community about where those lots are located?
I think one of the things, probably social media, probably working with our, our local media to do stories about them, I think the article that was on KOM last night about the vacant lots and the vacant houses, that's a great way to start getting people to understand, yes, we've got a problem, but we also are working on those solutions right there.
Can we get a map somewhere, the one that was up here a few minutes ago, that reflects those, that we can put on the website and put in the newspaper?
We have them already.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Item twenty is contract for purchase of real property at 200 East BJ Tunnel, Dean, that has your name next to it?
Yes, well, again, this is another project in relationship to controlling our own destiny. If you remember again at the December eighth meeting, you gave me permission to work with the trustee that owns the Eagle Pitcher property, and we have come to a, very quickly, we came to a recommendation to you about a real estate purchase, it's a $65,000 for the property that we talked about, we worked with Mr. Post here as the realtor on that. I believe that the trustee has accepted this, we currently have Chuck Chestnut working on the title and, and doing the basic title work on it, and I know that, I think the trustee wants to have everything dated about January 11th, as I understand, so from their point of view, they're, they're working on that. Also, in your packet, we did, we did give you a review of the Phase One environmental. I think at our last meeting, there were a lot of questions about, are there other things? And yes, there are a few other things, but nothing was a surprise. In fact, what we really appreciated was that ODEQ, which had the Phase One environmental done for us, indicated, indicated very much that this property, you know, once it's demolished, could be reused. So once we get a hold of it, obviously, we're gonna be working with ODEQ on trying to get into the Brownfields program to be able to take it down. A number of things that we could use this property for that we've talked about in the past, parkland, we've talked about possibly, and this is long-term planning, but probably be a great location for a new fire station in our community, we could redevelopment part of it into private development if we want to through the Brownfields program, because it's been, it hasn't been cost-effective for somebody to buy this and take it down. So I think at this point, we're ready for you to, if you will give me permission, that we'll, we'll finalize the sale and get this in our, in our inventory.
And the, the purchase price is 65,000, then there'll be some associated closing costs?
There would be, so the original proposal was that you gave me permission up to seventy, so I have basically a $5,000 budget to take care of that.
It's the, it's sort of the standard allocation of closing costs that you would expect in any ordinary real estate transaction.
It's been a very standard real estate transaction.
And Earl's only making one percent, is that standard for you?
I...
Haven't, haven't really gotten into that with Earl. Okay, so all you need is a motion to approve the contract?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Schultz?
Johnson?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Thank you, Dean, and thank you, Harold, for your work on that, too.
Harold's been very patient on this one, I really do appreciate it, thank you.
Item twenty-one, new business, any new business, Dean?
Nope, not on this agenda.
Okay, staff reports are in your packet, if there are no questions, we'll move on to mayor and council announcements.
I have one question, and Tyler probably knows it's coming. Went out to bid on the Hamlet Shelter yet?
That's, that's a Joe question, Joe?
That's a Joe question.
Joe and I have a meeting Monday morning.
Just finger pointing.
You have a meeting Monday morning?
Yes.
Okay.
To open bids or?
No, it's still being, Joe's still looking at, and we got a few questions.
Some requirements?
We don't, we want this to be the last time we open the bids on this one.
Okay, fair enough, so, so Councilman Johnson would like to know about when, and... Okay, fair enough. So, so Councilman Johnson would like to know about when, and-
I ask it every week. I mean, it ain't no surprise.
Yeah, Monday, again, we've got comments from the project team. There's a number of people still have comments on this thing. We're hoping the, the comments, it's supposed to be at the end of this week, wrap up everything Monday and get out the bids.
Okay.
All right, thank you. City managers' communication?
I have two, two items. One, Tyler asked me to report that the phase two of the Southwest Waterwell is getting underway. And there will be times with part of this project that area, people in that area will have low water pressure. We'll be notifying them when that happens, but this will wrap up that project and get that done, so that's good to know. And then the second thing is just, there's a lot of people to thank for their hard work during the recent storms and the high-water events, especially, I'd like to mention Glenda, of course. Our dispatch crew was phenomenal. Police and Fire is always great. Public Works did a great job. Parks, this time the water came up high enough that we took the pumps out of the big pool. So those were preserved, and a lot of work, but it was done. Utilities also did a terrific job, especially, it was reported, but when you have high-water events like this, this has a big effect on our wastewater treatment plant, and our, our people were really on top of that through the whole thing. And I'm sure I've forgotten some people, and I don't, I'm not intending to, but you got a good staff when it comes to events like this, and other events, too, and I just wanted to thank them.
They've had a lot of practice.
Yeah, unfortunately. I was going to say, they're used to it.
Unfortunately.
Okay, if there is nothing else, you have some?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn, Mayor?
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
And second?
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Earl.